Good evening, everyone. It's now five o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome to the November fifteenth joint meeting in the West Turlock and East Turlock Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board of Directors. And now call this meeting order at five o'clock. Chair Rosini, would you like to call your meeting order at this time?
Yes, for the East Side Turlock Sub Basin GSA, we're not called up. This joint special meeting to order at five o'clock.
Thank you very much. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, this meeting is being held by conference call without a physical meeting location. This meeting was noticed in accordance to the Brown Act, in addition to a physical meeting of the agenda posted at 333 East Canal Drive. The meeting was also noticed online and emailed to the sub-basin's interested parties list. This joint meeting is being recorded and will be posted online. The board secretaries are taking minutes as well. Materials are available at turlockgroundwater.org. The GSA has encouraged public participation during this special meeting, where we see public comment during the public comment period portion of the agenda and during specific items. Feel free to use the raise your hand feature in the Zoom platform if you'd like, or press star nine on your phone if you are calling in. Among other items, the GSA board will be receiving presentations on the draft chapters of the groundwater sustainability plan. Following presentations, the boards may act to release these plans for public comment. The boards are not finalizing the GSP in Huler Park tonight, so rather simply releasing the chapters to formally begin public review of these chapters. Next on the agenda, the item B, roll call of board of members participant introductions list. With that, let's have the roll call. Ms. Lang, can you please call the role for the West Turlock GSA?
Thank you, Chair Alamo. Director Alvarez?
Here.
Director Buck?
Here.
Director Larson?
Yes, present.
Thank you. Director Maldonado?
Present.
Director Odom?
Present.
Alternate Director Pereira? Alternate Director Pereira? Alternate Director Silveira?
Here.
Alternate Director Ward?
Here.
Vice Chair Juritzma?
Here.
Chair Alamo?
Present.
Thank you, Chair Alamo. We have a quorum of the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA Board.
Thank you.
At this time, this is Johnson. Do you want to call the role for the East Side Turlock Sub Basin GSA?
Yes, Chair Rosini, I will do so. Um. Do we have Chair Rosini?
Present.
Thank you. Vice Chair Pereira? I don't know if you've come on since the other one. Okay. Alternate, excuse me, alternate Director Ward?
Here.
Thank you. Director Ulrich? Director Ulrich? Okay, alternate Director Yatsuya?
Here.
Thank you. Director Eltal?
Present.
Thank you. It looks like we have a quorum for the-
Director.
Pereira has joined.
There we go. Director Pereira just joined.
Thank you, Director Pereira. Again, so there's a quorum on the East Turlock GSA Board.
Thank you. Now for the participant list, is there anybody that would like to voluntary identify themselves at this time? Harry Nunn will proceed right onto public comment period. Interested persons of the audience are welcome to introduce any topic within the agency's jurisdiction. No actions may be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except the boards may briefly respond to the comments referred to matter staff or request to be placed on a future agenda. Is there anyone from the pub who wishes to comment on any items not listed on the agenda? Hearing no public comment, we'll proceed right into staff updates, agenda item D, budget update. Michael?
Good evening, everyone. The balance for the basin account as of 10/1/21 was $944,874.81. We received $76,220.34. We spent $80,545.50, leaving us with a balance of $940,549.65. Any questions?
Questions for Michael on the budget update? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Moving on, we're going to move on to our consent calendar. It's the first time we've done a consent calendar here at the GSA. Like most consent calendars, I'll be looking for a person, a second on this unless there's somebody who wants to pull anything from the consent calendar and speak about it individually. If there's no comments, I'll move to accept the consent calendar. Juritzma? Thank you, Curtis. Is there a second on the consent calendar?
Second, Silveira.
Thank you. The consent calendar for the West Turlock's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Comments? Harry Nunn, I'll have Jennifer call the vote.
Thank you. Adopting the consent calendar as submitted. Director Alvarez?
Yes.
Director Buck?
Aye.
Director Larson?
Yes.
Director Maldonado? Director Maldonado?
Yes.
Thank you. Director Odom?
Yes.
Alternate Director Pereira?
Yes.
Alternate Director Silveira?
Yes.
Alternate Director Ward?
Yes.
Vice Chair Juritzma?
Yes.
Chair Alamo?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
With that vote, I'll declare that consent calendar passed. I do, I want to go back to public comment here. I see someone spoke up in the chat, did a public comment from Sprick?
Yeah, thanks very much. I was, I was trying to get in, didn't get in till you guys are moving fast. I just wanted to quickly say congratulations to everybody that's worked really hard on these chapters. They're out, you know, I know it's a big effort and I think you guys have done a really nice job. I do want to reiterate comments I made in the letter I sent about six weeks ago that there are substantial benefits to folks in Stanislaus County, cities and farms. If you can find a way to work with San Francisco, who's got huge water rights on the twolny and I I know there are cultural differences and historic problems with that, but but you guys are going to be not be able to do what you want with groundwater, not get the supplies you need. If you don't work with them and figure out how to do it, I really encourage you to move in that direction as you go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, if the East Turlock wants to move on to their consent calendar, that'd be great. I came on a bit late. Is that, has Al joined the meeting? I believe he is, yes. Okay. Are you looking for a motion, Al?
Yeah, I mean, a question for the board to discuss the current calendar. Board.
So moved?
So after a motion, seconded for the ECA board to move consent calendar.
I'll second.
And note that the item is a bid motion and seconded, Mr. Johnson, can you please call a roll call for the vote for the East Side Board, please?
Yes, as for the consent calendar, I will call a roll call. Alternate Director Ward?
Yes.
You, alternate Director Yatsuya?
Yes.
Thank you. Director Eltal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pereira?
Yes.
You, and Chair Rosini? Thank you. It looks like the motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move right in on the west side of the item G. First Amendment to the memorandum of agreement between the West Turlock Sub Basin and the East Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agencies. Valerie?
Yep. Thank you, Chair Alamo, Valerie Kincaid, General Counsel, West Turlock GSA. This is a first amendment to the MOA between the two GSAs in this basin. I'll briefly explain it and then happy to take any questions. The West Turlock GSA provided direction for its staff to develop a water accounting and include in the GSP. Per that direction, the West and East GSAs met at a staff level and again at an ad hoc board committee level, but were unable to agree on a final water accounting product to include in the GSA. So in order to continue along the lines of collaboration and submitting one GSP, this amendment consists of a few things. First, a renewed commitment to develop a single GSP hinged on the promises of including water accounting materials in that GSP that have already been submitted by both the West and the East, kind of putting a pinpoint in where we are in the negotiations of what our accounting at this point. And second, an express commitment to resolve the water accounting issue, including a specific timeline to resolve that issue in the GSP. So that is, that language is still being developed, but you will see in this MOA and the attachments to this MOA, the commitment to resolve the water accounting issue and include the existing attachments of each, the East and the West GSAs at this point into the GSP materials. So it's kind of a compromise to go forward and commit to resolving this right after we submit the GSP to DWR. I'm happy to take any questions, thoughts, or direction.
Valerie, I just had one, I don't know if it's a typo or just a clarification on recital B, where it says GSA, then it has parentheses, groundwater accounting structure. Wouldn't that supposed to be the same letters as the initials?
It would be, but I think it's actually referring to the, what is defined in that. So it says, the parties acknowledge that the implementation of the GSP will require that an accounting of groundwater, surface water stored in the basin aquifers and/or sustainable yield of the basin. And I suppose maybe the groundwater accounting structure short sight should be right after basin rather than after GSA. But I think, I think throughout this document, we're talking about that accounting, groundwater accounting structure that will include the accounting groundwater, surface water stored and sustainable yields waters. But you're, but you're right. I think that should be moved to right after basin rather than GSA because it's not a short sight for GSA.
Yeah, that was my point. It made it look like the rest of the times when you do that parentheses, it's a short for the longer name, so.
That's right. And I think we're just trying to short sight to that concept of what we're agreeing to. So I think with that very good amendment to move that short sight to right after the word basin, I think that's perfectly fine, but the whole concept is that that's what we're calling this accounting structure that, that we're going to be moving forward with. So I don't know if that clarifies it.
Yes, better than it was. Any other questions for Valerie? Clarifications? Comments?
I'll just say that I think it was, I think we made progress meeting with the East on this issue. You know, I think everyone at least acknowledges that it's there and that it exists. I think this is the right step to keep the process moving and to just continue the conversation, a very important conversation as we get ready to submit this GSA.
Any other comments? Questions, concerns? Not, I'll be willing to entertain a motion on this.
So moved, Juritzma?
Thank you, Curtis. Is there a second?
Second, Buck.
Thank you. With that, we have properly moved and seconded. Is there any further comments, questions? Harry Nunn, I'll let Jennifer call the role on this.
Thank you. Director Alvarez?
Yes.
Director Buck?
Aye.
Director Larson?
Yes.
Director Maldonado?
Yes.
Director Odom?
Yes.
Alternate Director Pereira?
Yes.
Alternate Director Silveira?
Yes.
Alternate Director Ward?
Yes.
Vice Chair Juritzma?
Yes.
And Chair Alamo?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
How do you want to go ahead on the east side?
Yeah. Like, ask for a motion a second for the ETS GSA board on the resolution.
Chair Rosini, this is Lauren Lane. I would just recommend that we make the same amendment that the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA did, moving that short sight to after the word basin.
Just over to the board.
This is Lloyd. I'll make that motion with that change.
Does Walt Ward, I second that?
Okay, the motion has been motioned and seconded, and I guess we need a roll for the Johnson roll call.
Okay, a motion to adopt the first amendment to the MOA as amended. Director Eltal?
Yes.
Thank you. Alternate Director Yatsuya?
Yes.
Alternate Director Ward?
Yes.
You, Vice Chair Pereira?
Yes.
And Chair Rosini?
Yes.
Thank you. Looks like the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving right along. Item number two, groundwater sustainability plan review of chapter eight, projects and management actions, and chapter nine, implementation and support activities. And I will let Ally and Dominic take this, I believe.
Trying to. Good evening, folks. This is Ally Tagabi with Weatherland Current. Very, very pleased to be here with you tonight to present the, two of the chapters for the GSP. The chapter eight is the projects and management actions. And chapter nine is the implementation and support activities. I want to make sure that my screen is shared. Can folks see my screen here?
Yes, we got it.
Thank you, Director, Chair Joe, Chair Alamo. So, so the the two chapters that are going to be presented, chapter eight and chapter nine, have been developed in collaboration between the East Turlock GSA as well as the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA. And once, once this presentation is completed, what we would like to do is to make a recommendation for an action to authorize the release of both chapters, chapter eight and chapter nine for public review and comment, please. With that in mind, we've gone through almost over a year or so of development of numerical integrated model for the basin. And this model has been the cornerstone of many of the analysis that has gone into development of the GSP. The model provides a representation of the physical system that's based on the latest information and data on hydrologic, hydrogeologic, land use and water supply, as well as operations of the reservoir and the deliveries and surface water diversions to the basin. And the model is fairly robust and is relying on lots of mathematical formulations that represent the physical processes on the surface, both for the urban and the ag entities as well as underground within the groundwater system. And it is calibrated to the observed data that has been available to us. This is just a snapshot of all sorts of different charts and maps and graphics that have been developed and shared with the ad hoc committee individuals as well as the technical advisory committee. And we've presented a summary of these in the past as well to the board, to the joint boards. This represents basically a snapshot of the calibrated results of the model. The model was developed in an open and transparent environment and has thus been fairly good and robust and reliable tool for implementation and development of the GSP. The application of the model for sustainability analysis is, is, is therefore what we're going to be, what we're going to be presenting today. The model provides a fairly good representation, representation of the basic physical system based on the available data, based in the mathematical formulations. And it is a fairly good tool for the basin wide as well as the GSA level conditions. It provides information on groundwater levels, flow conditions, and the interaction between the groundwater system and the river system. And then, therefore, the calibrated model, of course, has limitations and uncertainties with respect to the data that's gone into the model with respect to the level of calibration, but also with respect to the mathematical formulations. And so we keep those uncertainties in mind, the limitations in mind as we move forward with the application of the model. But we feel that the model is a reasonable predictive tool for looking at impacts of with and without project conditions in a relative sense and not necessarily in an absolute sense. So to that end, we've applied the model to look at what is sustainable yield of the basin. The the water, the water code defines the sustainable yield as the maximum quantity of water that is calculated over a base period of represented, that is representative of the long-term conditions in the basin and includes any temporary surplus that can be withdrawn annually from a groundwater supply without causing an undesirable result. Basically, in layman's term, what this means is how much can we pump from the groundwater system and use without really causing an undesirable result? And the undesirable results have been defined by the water code and by the GSP regulations as declining the groundwater levels, reductions in the groundwater storage, seawater intrusion, water quality degradation, and land subsidence as well as surface water depletions. And of course, seawater intrusion does not apply to our basin in Turlock, but all these other five categories do apply. And so we need to keep that in mind as we look at sustainable yield. So based on this definition, based on the five categories that are applicable to, to define or to to conclude what is an undesirable result, we've gone ahead and used the model to estimate with the current data sets, with all the uncertainties, what the sustainable yield of the basin is. That is, what's the long-term average annual quantity that we can pump from the basin without causing undesirable results? And so to that end, the numbers that, the number that we've landed on is approximately 311,000 acre feet a year. And so that number basically paints the picture on long-term production and groundwater pumping from the basin. When we look at that in the context of what it, what we have done in the past historically and what the future projected pumping looks like in the, in the basin, we can look at this chart here. The chart represents annual rainfall conditions so that we can get an idea of what the hydrologic conditions are. And so the longer the bar is, the more rainfall we had during those years. And all of these bars here to the left of the solid line here portrays the historical conditions. We've been looking at the 1991 to 2015 time period. And so these bars here are showing the estimated agricultural pumping and also observed or recorded pumping by the urban entities. And so to that end, the solid, each one of the solid bars, the stack bars show the total pumping for each year that's been estimated. Notice that during the drought conditions, we've had a whole lot more pumping going on. In some of the wetter years, we've had less pumping in the past. This same chart shows also what we are estimating the projected pumping could be for the, for a period of 50 years into the future. That 50 years in the future reflects water years 1960, 69 to 2015. So the hydrologic conditions in here show as an example, the 76, 77 drought, which was a lot, a lot less rainfall as well as the 87 to 92 drought again, which was a lot, a lot less rainfall, as well as the 2013 to 2015 drought conditions. And so when we superimpose the 311,000 estimated sustainable yield during the historical conditions, we've exceeded that sustainable yield. And that's why the groundwater levels have declined significantly over the course of historical conditions. If we look at the status quo and we continue the projected conditions, we're going to be also exceeding sustainable yield on an annual basis, pretty much almost every year without any actions. And so as such, the question is what sort of actions we need to take? And what's your, what's sort of the projects and management actions we need to bring in, into the play to make sure that we do not exceed the sustainable yield into the future and maintain the sustainable conditions in the basin? Chapter eight presents the projects and management actions that both the east side and the west side GSAs have collectively compiled. And I'm going to be presenting to you a synopsis of what those, what the impact and benefits of these projects are. So how do we meet sustainable yield in the basin and sustainability conditions? The water code refers to the projects and management actions and plans as, 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 as projects and management actions that the GSAs have to determine. and, and identify so that they would, the collectively, there would be in, the sustainable yield would be achieved within the basin. Projects are considered as physical constructed and structural features. And management actions are typically non-structural programs and policies that would have to be put in place. Projects and management actions are designed to incentivize programs and actions resulting in sub-basin sustainability. So to that end, the projects and management actions need to meet certain criteria and need to be described in specific, almost about 11-point criteria to, to meet the regulations, the requirements by the regulations. And so as such, we've gone ahead and compiled a list of 11 projects. These projects are amongst both the urban entities as well as the ag entities. The first five projects are directly relevant to the actions and implementation of projects by the urban entities. That includes the regional surface water supply project. That's the Stanislaus Regional Surface Water Supply Project. The second one is a water supply project by cities of Waterford and Hickman to regain surface water and, and reduce groundwater pumping. The third one is by the city of Turlock to include a stormwater basin, the Diane Stormwater Basin into the mix. Fourth one is the Stanislaus State Stormwater Recharge Project. And the fifth one is Advanced Meteoric Program by City of Modesto. Beyond the urban entities, there's been six water supply projects by both the west side and the east side GSAs. The Turlock ID, TID, has an on far recharge project that they're considering to implement. A recycled water project with the city of Turlock, and then also a series main regulating reservoir, all three of which would result in, in, in reductions in groundwater pumping. The east side GSA has also considered three implementation of three projects. The agricultural recharge project on the east side, Mustang Creek flood control recharge projects, and also the upland pipeline project. Collectively, all these 11 projects are shown on this map in here. You'll notice that we have three agricultural projects on the east side. We have also three agricultural projects that are promoted by the, by TID on the west side, plus the five projects by the, by the urban entities. These are called group one and group two projects. Pretty much group one and group two projects are the low-hanging fruits. These are projects that have been defined and, and they meet the regulatory requirements to the extent that they have been documented. Also, the quantity of the water that are available from each or for each one of these projects are relatively reasonably defined. And so to that end, we've been able to utilize all of these definitions and quantifications in the model so that we can assess the implications and the benefits of these projects to the sustainability of the basin. A group three set of projects have also been defined. There are approximately 11, what we call group three projects. These are more of a conceptual state projects. And so there need, there needs to be a whole lot more information and data collected for these projects so that we can quantify what the implications and the benefits of these projects would be. These, there, there will be additional information and additional investigation and studies that need to be implemented over the next five years so that we can quantify the benefits of these projects over the next five years. This map here is showing approximate location of these additional 11 projects, both on the east side as well as the west side. In order to evaluate the benefits of the group one and group two, the low-hanging fruit projects, we've gone ahead and categorized these into five scenarios so that we can evaluate these within the integrated regional model. Scenario one basically focuses on the urban projects. Scenario two focuses not only on the urban projects, but also on the projects from the west side GSA. Scenario three looked at the urban projects plus the projects by the east side GSA. And scenario four looked at all of the projects together, both the urban and the ag projects that are promoted by the east side and the west side. With all of these projects implemented, we still do not necessarily achieve full sustainability of the basin based on the factors and criteria that were set, the sustainable management criteria. So in order to meet the additional net deficit to, to bring the basin into sustainable condition, there, there has to be some level of demand reduction. And so that's what scenario five is about, which brings both the project, all of the projects into the play, as well as some level of demand reduction. And collectively, the projects and the management actions will then result in a sustainable condition within the Turlock Sub Basin. So in order to evaluate these projects, we looked at projects, the groups of entities who have availability and access to surface water as well as groundwater for their water supplies. And we also looked at the groundwater only users, which are primarily shown in the green area here. And so when we looked at the, the purple area, the blue areas, group A, and then the group B, we were able to focus where additional demand reduction needs to take place in a most, most optimized fashion in order to bring the basin into sustainable condition. So the sustainable management criteria was first to look at groundwater storage. That's the long-term annual change in groundwater storage to be zero. We also looked at declining groundwater levels, which is to maintain the minimum threshold for a set of wells that have been used for monitoring network at the 2015 groundwater levels for three consecutive years. We also looked at land subsidence, and we use the groundwater levels as proxy, a proxy for land subsidence evaluation. And then last but not least, we looked at surface water depletion for, for areas that surface water and groundwater are integrated and they are connected. And so as such, we looked at the spring 2014 along Merced River. We looked at fall 2015 for both San Joaquin and the Tuolumne River. And the compliance measure was whether or not we violate the, the thresholds in, within two consecutive annual monitoring events. And so the last one, the interconnected, interconnected surface water depletions was really the highest bar to achieve in order to bring the basin into sustainability. So we looked at, this map here is showing the representative monitoring points for groundwater levels. We have a handful of wells in the east side GSA, also a handful of wells on the, on the west side. And so we looked at the first three sustainability criteria for these wells here. I apologize. The first one was storage. So we didn't really use groundwater levels for storage. We calculated the groundwater storage by the model, but we used the groundwater levels as well as the, the, the the groundwater levels as a proxy for, for land subsidence at these monitoring wells. This other map here is showing the representative monitoring wells for interconnected streams. And so we have three of those along San Joaquin River. We have, we have five of them along the Merced River. And then a proposed sixth one that needs to be drilled in the future using Prop 68 funding. And then there are three of them, two, two actual monitoring wells that currently exist. And then the third one that is proposed also along the Tuolumne River. So we use these here to look at the sustainable management criteria with respect to the interconnected streams. And so to that end, when we look at all three of the major sustainability criteria, I'm going to walk through what each one of them would pertain. So this chart here is showing in solid black line, the long-term ground, projected groundwater storage under the baseline condition. So under the baseline condition, notice that the, the red line is showing the zero change in storage. And so we would violate groundwater storage threshold in number of years, more than three consecutive years, definitely. And so as such, we need to implement projects which are group one and group two projects, as well as additional management actions to bring the basin into sustainability. So when we implement group one and group two projects, we are able to raise groundwater storage over the long term. And then when we implement the additional either group three projects or the demand reduction, we're definitely out of trouble. And so over the long haul, we're able to maintain groundwater storage above the zero line, which would result in sustainability of the basin. Another way of looking at that is this a pretty cluttered chart, but the cluttered chart is basically showing everything in the, in the negative in here is showing the groundwater pumping on an annual basis. And then anything that's above the zero is showing basically a stack bar chart of the various inflows into the groundwater system. This solid line here is showing the same solid line that I showed you in the previous chart. And that's the baseline condition storage change over time. And so notice over time, we're still declining less than zero. And so under the sustainable condition, when we're able to reduce groundwater pumping, notice all the gray bars in here are less than the gray bars on the left-hand chart. And we're able to bring in more projects, which means more surface water in due of use of the groundwater system and the groundwater pumping, we're able to increase the storage to above zero. So in no years, we would be, we would be violating the threshold in terms of zero storage. When we look at the declining groundwater levels throughout the basin, these are two representative hydrographs. And so the representative hydrographs in here, the one to the left is showing changes in the groundwater level over time at that, at this particular well on the west side. And then another example of representative hydrograph on the east side. The dash lines in here are showing the, the, the red dash line is showing the minimum threshold and the green dash line is showing the measurable objective. The measurable objective being an objective as to where we would like the basin to maintain over the long haul. And the minimum threshold is where we do not want to violate this line more than three consecutive years. And so under the baseline condition, which is a solid line in here, we are violating the minimum threshold in more than three years. But as we include and, and as we implement scenarios and the projects, we're able to rise, raise groundwater levels to somewhere above the minimum threshold. So in no case, we would be violating the minimum threshold. In fact, groundwater levels would be much higher. On the west side, the same thing is true. On the east side, we would be maintaining groundwater levels at much higher level so that we would not violate the minimum thresholds. The same concept can be applied to minimum thresholds that are applicable to the interconnected surface water depletions. And so notice this particular well in here, under the baseline condition, which is the orange line here, in many years, we would be violating the minimum thresholds. But when we implement both the projects and, and the management actions, we are able to raise groundwater levels to a point that the basin would stay in a sustainable management state. Same thing on the east side, we would be able to increase the groundwater levels to a point that we would not be violating the groundwater, the, the minimum thresholds as often as it was under the baseline conditions. So as such, we would then be able to maintain the groundwater, the, the groundwater system in a sustainable manner. So the overall finding is that if, once we implement group one and group two projects, both of them have significant benefits in meeting the sustainability goal. Additional projects and or demand management actions are needed to meet the sustainability goal, which, which results in approximately 25% reduction in net groundwater demand on the east side that is needed to meet the sustainability goal. That 25% reduction in groundwater demand can be, can be reduced significantly if these group three projects are implemented over the next few years. So the net groundwater demand reduction can be partially, like I said, offset by the additional projects that are defined in group three or maybe other projects. So groundwater, the, the GSP implementation includes adaptive management as well. As we look at the uncertainty in the data, in the analysis and the evaluations that we've done. As we look at the uncertainties with respect to the projects that are conceptualized so far, as well as uncertainty in the, in the data sets, there are many areas that we need to gain more data, more information and more knowledge in the state of the basin. And so as such, as we monitor the basin, as we get more information, we need to be looking at that adaptive management. That's the path forward. And so we need to establish the estimate a sustainable yield based on the latest data, but also gain more knowledge and information. The analysis tool definitely needs to have additional sort of calibration and additional data. And as such, it would definitely benefit from adaptive management. Once we have that additional data, we can reduce the uncertainties and close the data gaps and also meet the compliance requirements with additional observations to make sure that the minimum thresholds are set properly and also the, the measurable objectives are also set properly. So adaptive management is a key cornerstone of how we're going to move forward over the next several years in implementation of Sigma in the Turlock Sub Basin. Like I said, implement, the adaptive management is going to include implementation of initial projects, project group one and two, implementation of the monitoring program, collection of additional data and information. We need to recognize uncertainties throughout the planning process, both in terms of the analysis tools as well as the data. Performing analysis to reevaluate the performance and benefits of the projects. Prepare annual state of the basin reports that would be submitted, not only to DWR, but would be used to keep an eye on how the basin is managed under sustainable condition. Also look at assessment of the viability of the group three projects and collect additional information and data and define these group three projects in a way that they could be also be implemented. And then eventually reassess the nature and extent and timing of the demand reduction. So to that end, the management actions are, consist of demand reduction strategies. These demand reduction strategies include, as an example, voluntary conservation and or land following. They could also include conservation practices. These are typical, normal ways of looking at demand reduction strategies. We could also look at pumping management framework. And so that includes, as an example, extraction reporting program, allocation and pumping management program, as well as looking at extraction fees and also pumping credit markets and trading programs. We also would like to keep an eye on the domestic wells and mitigate any impacts on the domestic wells to the extent that data and information is available on the nature and the sort of infrastructure within these domestic wells so that we can manage the impacts and implications on the domestic wells appropriately. I'd like you to share with you again the same chart that I showed you before. This one here is showing not only the historical conditions, but also the projected pumping conditions relative to the estimated sustainable yield. And so once we implement group one and group two projects, as well as the demand reduction and/or the group three projects, we're able to reduce the groundwater pumping significantly so that in the long haul, we would stay within sustainable yield. So notice, I'm going to toggle back and forth. And notice the groundwater pumping overall is projected to reduce as a result of implementation of the projects and as a result of implementation of the projects and management actions as outlined in in chapter eight. A few more notes on adaptive management. There is definitely uncertainty or sin uncertainty within within the overall analysis that will always be present. We need to use monitoring of the groundwater conditions to determine what additional actions are needed, a combination of the group three projects, pumping management framework, as well as the demand reduction. And and adaptive management strategy concepts are are also going to be discussed in just a minute in the next slide. And so this slide here is also fairly cluttered, but I'm going to do my best to explain what this is. This is a conceptual look at what adaptive management can potentially look like when we look at overall pumping and this is percent of the average estimated sustainable yield. And so if we look at overall pumping within the basin under the first year of the implementation, we're looking at not only hundred percent of the pumping, but also we're going to be exceeding the sustainable yield by about forty percent as an example. And so what this is 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 showing that the the red area or the red bars are showing the sustainable unsustainable pumping. And so over time, we're able to reduce that unsustainable pumping as we bring projects and management actions in the in the game and as we are able to implement those management actions. And so over the course of the first five years, as an example, we could potentially be reducing what the unsustainable pumping is. And so over the long haul, we should be able to reduce the ground unsustainable groundwater pumping in a way that the projects and management actions are are in the game in order to meet that sustainability condition. And so because the blue areas, the blue strapped area is representing only the projects, there is also demand reduction that needs to be considered over time in order to meet the sustainability conditions. As we look at this, notice that if this is the ground, the demand reduction, we can also bring in more projects, which includes not only group groups one and two projects, which are the low hanging fruit projects, but also additional projects from within group three projects in order to shave off a large part of the demand reduction over time. So that concludes my presentation on chapter eight. I have one slide on chapter nine, which is implementation support activities. And that and the implementation support activities include eleven points, including monitoring and reporting and outreach, addressing identified data gaps, including updating and improving the existing monitoring networks. Number three is accounting mechanisms for water supply within the basin. Fourth one is implementation of the project and management actions, including adaptive management approach. Development of action plans for exceedance of minimum thresholds, which may result in undesirable results. Number six is refining groundwater model, incorporating new data and studies and updating the model. Number seven is further development of the data management system. Number eight is improvement in coordination and planning integration. Number nine is well registration and management. Number ten is development of financing strategies, including seeking additional grant funding to support implementation of the GSP. And last but not least is updating the OPTI database in order to have a comprehensive repository of all of the projects that have been incorporated or in the IRWM in the past, integrated regional water management plan in the past, as well as the projects that are within the G considered within the GSP. Those would all be within an OPTDMS database system that would make them all readily available as grant funding opportunities or or as grant funding opportunities come by. So with that in mind, I'm going to conclude the presentation with a recommendation to for the respective board boards on the west side and the east side to authorize the release of the chapter eight of the draft groundwater sustainability for public review, as well as recommending to release authorize the release of chapter nine of the draft sustainable groundwater sustainability plan for public review. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ali. I see a question there on chat. You could answer that one for us. What is the Merced ID expansion project?
So the Merced ID expansion project is 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 expansion of the of the service area that could potentially be the case within the within the upland pipeline area. In the event that there is hydrology analysis that supports the availability of additional wet year water, then that water could potentially be available for the areas within the north side canal service area for 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 the east side sub-basin, basically.
Yeah, this is this is Isham from Merced ID. So I would suggest that I think this gives the impression that Almighty Boundary is growing. That's not the intent. So I think we need to come up with a different name for this project. Maybe I'll maybe I'll send you something.
Thank you for that comment. I'll note it.
Thank you for that. Is there any further questions or comments, Rely? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to release chapters eight and nine for public comment.
So moved Buck.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second, hold another.
It's improperly moved and second. Is there any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 There are set, any opposed same time? Motion passes on the west side. Al, you want to call one for the east side?
East side, Turlock sub-basin. Looking for a motion and a second to accept recommendation of releasing chapter eight and chapter nine.
This word move approval.
Second.
This is Dirk, I'll second.
Motion is with, move the second. I guess we do a voice vote on this one. All in favor, say aye.
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 The opposition are not consent. Motion is carried.
Thank you, Chair Zini. We will move on to item number three, groundwater sustainability plan. Review of chapter three, communication and outreach chapter.
Er. Hey there. Good evening, Chair, both chairs and and both boards of the Turlock sub-basin. I have a quick ten or twelve slide presentation. I'm going to go over real quick. But this is one chapter I will note that is is not yet completed. Of course, none of them are completed per se. They're all drafts getting ready for public comment. But this one actually is going to go all the way up to the end of the adoption, public adoption. Because we're still doing outreach even as we do this meeting right here. So we're going to update the chapter as we go along, but it is it is pretty robust and complete. So just like Ali did for chapters eight and nine just now, I'm going to give a snapshot summary of what is in chapter three for the draft GSP. Quick little overview of what the regulations say. You see in red, especially as we go down towards section D here, that the regulations for the communications of the GSP just simply require that we outline within the plan or communication section. That's what we have here before before you to potentially release tonight. That talks about the decision making process of the GSAs, opportunities for engagement and how input will be will be taken, how we're encouraging the active involvement of many different areas within the sub-basin and how we're going to inform the public about the plan as it implements. And so that's what the DWR GSP regulations state currently. So that's just a quick overview of that. This chart here, I'm not intending for for anybody to read this. This is is what we have in a table in chapter three. But what does the law say? And what we attempt to do is to go through the Sigma itself, the three, the three bills that were passed into law that are considered that are now called Sigma. And we went through and we outlined these different areas of what's required during different phases of Sigma during GSA formation, during GSP development implementation. And then there are some some things that the law requires throughout Sigma implementation. We go through in this table in our chapter and we outline all those legal requirements. And then in a chart, we also outline what we think we have done to comply above and beyond those requirements. So that is in a table that we have outlined in chapter three as well. Want to make a quick note, the drafting team that drafted chapter three, of course, our our GSP consultant Todd Groundwater worked on the chapter. We primarily used our ad hoc communications committee of comprised of various members within the entire sub-basin. They're basically volunteering members of the technical advisory committees. And then Sacramento State's College of Continuing Education worked on a few items as well. They are a a subconsultant of Todd Groundwater, and so they've helped us out as well. And then we, through some DWR facilitation support services hours that we've received, have been using Stan Tech Consulting, who is working on behalf of the state, on behalf of DWR, to help us with a few items that are going to go into our appendix. And they've worked us with some on some facilitation as well for GSP meetings. And some of the things are listed there, some call logs and and some stakeholder assessments that they're working on. But the big thing too, that's going to be discussed much more in the coming month will be the GSP response to comments and the comments that we'll receive and that we already have received. We're working with Stan Tech to develop a a matrix and a response to that that will get included in the GSP as well. So the drafting process, you see in red where we're at tonight. You were coming before you after getting TAC approval to come before you with this chapter to seek authorization to release chapter three tonight, just as you released chapters eight and nine for public public comment. And you see the process, it started off, it started off with some of the agencies or some of the entities that I mentioned in the previous slides. And it made its way from the ad hoc communications committee making refinements to the technical advisory committees for their comments in late October. And then I mentioned it was on November fourth that the TAC recommended us to come before you tonight. And so we're looking to seek get that authorization in in a few moments here. And then we would look to post online on our GSP page. And then we would be making any changes prior to the the formal GSP public adoption and the GSA public hearing. There's really five sections of the of the chapter. And the biggest one I've highlighted in red is really the opportunities for engagement and input. And that's where I really highlight all the different channels and engagement activities we had available for public comment and for public involvement in general. And then there's other items there that are there as well that we cover as required by by statute and and by regulation. This is a list of all the appendices we've worked up thus far. These are things that that will not necessarily make their way into the the text itself of chapter three. Chapter three thus far is a is a relatively short document. It's about twenty five pages. But then we have all these appendices that are referenced in the chapter that are going to be compiled with many, many other appendices that are part of the GSP appendices that are not necessarily even related to chapter three that are involved in the other chapters. So we'll have a really big appendix for the GSP. And you see here, all these, all these items are referenced in the different types of outreach, different formalization of the outreach that we've done, just documenting everything that we've done thus far. And so a lot of these things make their way by just general reference into chapter three. But the bulk of the data essentially falls in in the appendices. There's still work that needs to be done on, as I mentioned before, on chapter three. There's a many, as as this gets released to the public, you'll see many yellow highlights in the draft chapter three. And those are various metrics that are always constantly being updated. Things like how many, how many people have visited our website? How many emails have we sent? How many public meetings have we we held? Obviously, chapter three is is up to date up to today as it's going to be released. But of course, we'll have to update those metrics as we move forward as we continue to hold outreach up till the public adoption. And then there's a few things that are still being worked on. There's a stakeholder gap analysis, which is being conducted by a subconsultant, kind of giving us a good glimpse of the people that we've been reaching out to and where we might be able to improve as implementation occurs. We have a timeline of meetings that we're working on updating. It's a visual display of the hundreds of meetings that have been held. It's a pretty cool feature, but obviously that has to be finished at the last minute. And then, of course, I mentioned earlier, one of the appendices is the response to public comments that we're working on. Of course, as comments come in, we're going to continue to respond to those. So we're still working on that as well. This is an example of a table that's going to be in our in our chapter, just basically outlining the various public comment periods that we've held for the various chapters. You see here for chapters, you know, three and then eight and nine, a release for public comment date of today, followed by, you know, a public comment period showing that we're looking for comments. We're requesting respectfully requesting comments from the public before December fifteenth of 2021 for both chapter three and chapters eight and nine. And so we're going to make those available after this meeting on the website for comment. But this is an example of a table we have now. I'll make note that all of the chapters that we've, the comments requested by date has since passed. Say, for example, chapter one, which we were asking for comments by September first of 2021. We still remain, they still remain available for download and reading on the website. And we're still taking comments on those chapters, any of the chapters, should people choose to comment. But for the sake of hoping to implement the comments that are given to us in a timely fashion and be able to address them in the GSP, we're always, that's why we have the requested by date. So we have the date there, but we would love to get comments whenever we get them. So it's just a note that those those dates do not close comment periods, but we would love to get them before that date for sake of having an efficient GSP come before the GSAs in January. So that's an example of a table that's in there. I mentioned before, this is just a quick example. It's not complete. It only covers the years 2017 and 2018, but there've been hundreds. I I think we're just shy of 200 total meetings since we started the formation of the G, since we started GSP development, not even prior to GSP, there'd be much more than that. But we have a Excel spreadsheet that lists all these meetings in the appendix, but it's a good visual representation to have some sort of figure. So this is a figure that's going to be in the chapter three that is going to highlight all the various meetings as they're color coded in the years that we've held. And so this is an example. It's not the final one, but this is an example of what it would look like in 2017 and 2018. Each dot here represents a different meeting and it's color coded based on the different types of meetings that have been held. And so we're working on that and we'll get that updated and in the final GSP before it comes before you in January as well for chapter three. This is a the kind of the crux of the main, the main slide that I have. I had a, I presented to the TAC a pretty huge table covering all the different communications tools we had, but it was pretty, pretty kind of confusing, not confusing, but there's a lot going on. So I just kind of reformatted it to this slide. And these are the highlights of really the communication that we've conducted thus far on the GSP. You know, there's been fifty six Easter Locks sub-basin GSA meetings since 2017 up to up to today. There've been twenty six Western Locks sub-basin meetings, almost a hundred TAC meetings, either individually or collectively of of the two tax. We've had some almost sixty seven hundred visits to the website. We've had some almost sixty seven hundred visits to the website since we launched in twenty seventeen and up to, you know, seventeen hundred seventeen thousand page views thus far. The big thing that we've used and I highlighted here in red, and I have a just a screenshot to the right of one of the emails. We've really used our interested parties list of some three hundred and seventy four subscribers to date to send immediate emails, noticing meetings, various newsletters that we have, mentioning videos that are available. And to date, we've sent some thirty nine thousand deliveries of those of those emails. And so we've had a hundred and twenty nine specific emails sent, received by thirty nine hundred people, yes, sorry, thirty nine thousand people. And so that's been the main way we've communicated digitally, especially during during the pandemic. And then, of course, we've had tons of digital resources and we have our social media accounts and we continue to be active on YouTube. We even have a video, a sigma video that we have out there too. So those are the main highlights. Of course, we communicate in a lot of other ways. But it's mainly through these avenues that have been our primary ways, public meetings, website, emails to our interested parties, digital media and social media. So other items that are you're going to find in chapter three. One is our governance structure and decision making. You see a chart describing how that works with you know, these two, the two boards that are here and how public input has come before those boards and their representative technical advisory committees and then various various ad hoc committees that are available as well. And so we also discuss that. We discuss our branding efforts. We discuss how we've outreach tribal stakeholders in disadvantaged areas. I know that's been a mean, a main discussion point at the statewide level. And so we've we've outlined that as well in chapter three in 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 no short fashion. And that is really the end of what I have prepared before before you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions or if if so obliged, the GSAs wanted to make respective recommendations or motions to release chapter three to the public. And so I will pause and leave it to the will of the boards.
Thank you for that update. Any questions for her? Good update. Not we will entertain a motion in a second on the
Motion to approve Larson.
Thinking Nicole, is there a second?
Second Buck.
Thank you very much. Probably moving second to release this chapter three of the draft groundwater assembly plan for public review and comment. Is there any further comments or questions or concerns at this time? Karen, none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose same sign, please. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
East side GSA board will entertain a motion in a second for the release of chapter three of groundwater sustainability comment.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, the second.
Lloyd, I'll second it.
Okay, if we're being a voice for it, all in favor, say aye.
Chair Rosini, if I might, this is Jessica Johnson. We're recommending a roll call vote for these votes, which I'm happy to call.
Call on east side, please.
Okay, thanks. And just to make sure, I'm on my phone right now. That was Director Eltal who voted the first.
Direct.
Current, thank you.
I made the I made the motion.
Okay, perfect. And so on the motion to release chapter three, Director Eltal.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Director Ulrich?
Yes.
You alternate Director Ward?
Yes.
Thank you. Director Perea?
Yes.
You and Chair Rosini. Okay, thank you. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item number four here, a public hearing date to consider adopting the Turlock sub basin and groundwater sustainability plan and directing the technical advisory committees to publish the required notices. Michael Cook.
Good evening, Chair Alamo and Rosini. Sigma requires that a GSA hold a public hearing to consider adopting its GSP and to take public comments. And prior to holding such a public hearing, the GSAs must provide at least ninety days notice to affected cities and counties within the GSP area. And so the West Turlock and the East Turlock GSAs jointly provided written notice to the affected cities and counties and other agencies within the sub basin on September tenth, twenty twenty one. And so in preparation for adopting the GSP for the sub basin, sub basin by the statutory deadline, which remember is that January thirty first of next year. And to provide your consultant team with sufficient time to upload and submit GSP. Staff from both GSAs recommended joint public hearing date of January sixth, twenty twenty two to review and consider comments from the public regarding the GSP and to consider adopting the GSP. So that hearing will be planned for January sixth, twenty twenty two to receive final comments and move the GSP forward to DWR from consideration. I'll give our consultant team about two or three weeks to pull the documents together and upload them to the DWR website. And one other just quick item, we are also planning a joint meeting for December fifteenth to provide kind of a global overview of the GSP for more public comment as Herb mentioned. And then for members of the public to ask questions. So that'll be another opportunity then. But right now, setting the hearing for January sixth of next year. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Here are no questions or comments for Michael. I would be willing to entertain a motion for the west side to set that public hearing date.
Ward move approval.
There a second?
All second, Director Odom.
Thank you for the first and the second. Is there any further discussion or comments, questions? With that, we'll do a roll call vote. Is Lang, can you call that for me, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Alamo. And before doing so, I would like to note that Vice Chair Turetsma had to leave the meeting. Therefore, he will be absent from this vote. Director Alvarez?
Yes.
Director Buck?
Aye.
Director Larson?
Yes.
Director Maldonado?
Yes.
Director Odom?
Yes.
Alternate Director Pereira?
Yes.
Alternate Director Silveira?
Yes.
Alternate Director Ward?
Yes.
And Chair Alamo?
Yes, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hey. East side GSA for open for a motion of second or approve of the resolution.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been motion has been made in second. Can we have a full call vote, please?
Sure, I will start with Director Eltal.
Yes.
Director Ulrich?
Yes.
Direct, excuse me, alternate Director Ward?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pereira?
Yes.
And Chair Rosini. Okay, thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. With that, I think we've moved right along tonight. We just had comments from the board. Any comments or anything we're bringing in front of the whole board tonight? I'm not hearing anything on the west side, anything on the east side out there, any comments, questions, concerns? Well, I'd like to thank everybody for attending tonight and the participation and declare the meeting adjourned. Our next regular meeting will be on December, or not regular, but especially it will be on December the fifteenth, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the evening.